Good evening. I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education regular meeting, hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person, to order 7:08. First order of business is a pledge of the flag. Please rise for the pledge of the flag and then the silence.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Puzzled as with convocation, this is an exciting, fun night that we have prepared here where we honor a number of people. And so, the September meeting is always an exciting one. The first order of business is introduction of the new Board of Education Student Representative. And Ms. Thomas? Let's do that. Thank you.
All right, everyone. It is with great honor that I present to you our Board of Education Student Representative, Ms. Abigail Morin-Byel. Abigail is a senior at Windsor High School and has been in Windsor Public Schools since her days at Paquonic and Clover Street. She has always carried a challenging academic schedule, starting AP classes in her sophomore year. When she finishes her time with us at Windsor High School, she will have taken 10 AP courses. Abby is quite a leader and is very involved in the Windsor community and the greater community beyond Windsor. She has served on the School Governance Council and she was the Academic Bowl Captain. She teaches figure skating to young children and is currently a member of the Student Connections Leadership and is the Deputy Group Commander for our Windsor High School Junior ROTC Unit. When asked about Abby, Major Speer said, "Abby is a model student who tirelessly works to help others in the school and the broader Windsor community." Abby is planning to study biology with possibly a second major in neuroscience and is considering a variety of locations for her dream school at Dartmouth. After she receives her diploma in June, it is with great honor that we present Abigail to you. Thank you.
Abby, you want to say a few words here, but then we'll ask you to do your report afterwards. I'll plunge you right in here.
I would just like to start off by thanking you for letting me be here. It's a great honor to represent both myself and my peers on Board of Education to let our voice be heard. Thank you.
And one of the things mentioned was the School Governance Council. And I had the pleasure of being one of the Board of Representatives to that. And Abby was during COVID and all I saw her was on screen because she doesn't exist here. So, it's wonderful. Next, we have on the list, introduction of Windsor's Educator of the Year, Kerry Canoni and under Daniel Batsholder and Dr. Noha Haiti.
So, I'd like to call up Dr. Noha Haiti and she will introduce the Windsor Educator of the Year, Kerry Canoni.
Good evening, everyone, present today and viewers at home. I have the distinct pleasure and honor of introducing one of our amazing, passionate, self-driven, innovative, creative, and I can go on and on all night about this educator who has all the qualities that makes her as a very special individual that she is, Ms. Kerry Canoni. Kerry has been a dedicated educator for over 25 years and 21 years of which here in Windsor Public Schools. For the past seven years, I have had the honor and pleasure of working very closely with Kerry as our STEM coach at Paquonic School. Throughout those years, I have seen Kerry inspire students, families, and staff, anyone that she interacts with. She believes in finding that spark of inspiration in all the kids. She is, she works so hard to get students to find that aha moment. You know, whether she's making engaging videos all of the last couple of years while kids were at home for COVID during the pandemic, providing support for teachers, modeling lessons, or even dressed as a penguin and, you know, commonly called Gigi around the school. Kerry's energy and love for math and science is really just contagious. Kerry is not only an amazing instructional leader in her building, but she plays a crucial role on our STEM team, all of the six STEM coaches. She often brings ideas and strategies to improve teaching and learning across all six buildings. Beyond the walls of Windsor Public Schools, Kerry is an active leader in the Windsor community, including in her church where she serves as a head deacon. It is with great pride and pleasures that I introduce Windsor Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kerry Canoni.
Thank you very much. I am so honored and grateful is my new word. It's always been a word for me, but being grateful. I'm very grateful for the opportunities that Windsor Public School has afforded me and I continue to dream of the prospects that are going to come up because I'm not done yet. Thank you very much.
You have to run the golf flag. And hopefully we'll get a picture with you with all of the board too. Congratulations. Dr. Hill, do you want to be in front here with her? We'll take a picture of the rest of us. Come on in. I won't bite you. Well, you might.
We have to get into the act.
Yeah, we're good. And the family?
Former Windsor student, a Windsor teacher.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I had seen Kerry at the Union Street Tavern Trot the other day and Channel 61 came around. It says, "Does anybody want to get on film?" And of course, I went up and it's like, "This is the Windsor Educator of the Year." If you watched Channel 61 the other night, you might have seen her. She was also very instrumental in a great attempt by Paquonic School to get one of the young dogs that were being raised, a puppy, a service dog, I guess. And they had a challenge on Channel 61. There were three different names, Windsor, Bradley, and Mystic. And it was a full court press by Paquonic at least. I know I contacted my daughter up in Boston to vote for Windsor, but fortunately Windsor came in last. Next, introduction is for Windsor's Para Educator of the Year, Beth O'Shea. Again, Dr. Daniel Batsholder.
I'll stick with the doctor. So, our next...
Dr. Lockhart.
I'd like to call up Principal Taryn Gruber to introduce our Para Educator of the Year, Beth O'Shea.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. I'm humbled to introduce the Windsor Para Educator of the Year. I was told to shorten what I said at the convocation, so I won't say everything I had to say, but I'm going to focus on a few points. So, Beth O'Shea is truly the salt of the earth. She would do anything for anyone. People say she would give the shirt off her back. They really mean it. She really would. I would like to repeat what I said at the convocation in terms of what students said about her. These students were three and four years old when they worked with Beth. And Beth focuses on students, so that's why I'm going to pull out these comments from students. One student said, "When I needed help, she was always there for me." Another student said, "She handmade a chapstick holder so I could always find it." Another student, remember, three and four, "I love her to the moon and back. She taught me a lot of cool things." "I liked that Mrs. O'Shea taught me how to write my name and I loved doing art with her. She would jump on the trampoline with me. Mrs. O'Shea always sets up secret surprises for us." And you know, kids will say what they really mean. These kids loved Beth O'Shea and so do we. Windsor is very lucky to have her. So, Beth O'Shea.
Thank you very much. I'm honored. I work with some of the best para professionals in the state of Connecticut and I'm honored to represent them. I have always worked in early education and we have shirts that say, "Early intervention is the best intervention." And I truly believe that and it's up to us as adults to honor that statement and take full advantage of the time that we have with these children because it will send them on to a successful educational career. Thank you.
You have to run the golf.
And a picture.
I know, right? You guys ready? Family? He's got a blog.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have a presentation by the Lions Club, by Leo Club, Community Service. I'm introducing Cindy Daniels to you. She's going to be, I heard from her tonight, the new president.
Yes, I am. I just want to know where the PowerPoint will come from. When I used to do these Board of Education conferences. First of all, I'd like to thank you for putting me on the agenda. Much appreciated. And I'm here at the perfect time because I'm thrilled to see a student sitting up there with all of you. Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you very much. So, I'm going to take a little bit of your time tonight. I'm going to share with you about Leo Clubs. I'm going to tell you some of the opportunities that the Lions have available in your schools and they are exciting. And because our membership has now grown to 47, we have some Lions that want to come in the schools and make them happen. So, I'm thrilled. So, thank you very much for letting me be with you. So, Leo Club stands for Leadership, Experience, and Opportunity. And there's many different kinds of Leo Clubs. Here in Windsor, for four years, you have had a school-based Leo Club at Sage Park. And that serves children from age 12, goes all the way to 18. You do not have a Leo Club at the high school. And that was because I didn't have a Lion that could really like a liaison for you. So, your high school kids come back over to Sage Park and join in with us. So, we are an official club of Lions Club International. We're in 140 countries and we're more than a million children strong. So, I had shared with you that they're 12 to 18 and we have many different types of clubs. You have an Alpha Club here in Windsor and those kids, we recruit them at age 12 and like I said, they go back and forth. There are Omega Leos from 18 to 30 and we now have Leo Lions who are from 18 to 35. And those are all good opportunities because their dews are either nonexistent or very, very small. It's all good. What you're going to notice about your Leos here in Windsor and Leos all over the world is that they have service in the same global causes as the Lions. And you'll see those up on the top of the screen. So, we serve diabetes, vision, hunger, the environment, and childhood cancer. And your Leos do that as well. Some of the things that your Leos here in Windsor have done. One of the things you're going to notice, if we were to go tomorrow night to Litchfield County and I would talk to another club, you would see a whole different list of service because your Leos are going to reflect the needs right here in your community. That's what I like about you. I like everything about Leos. So, your Leos actually did kid site vision screening on babies six months old and we can go up to children age 12. The scanners that are in your schools were purchased by your Lions and to the $218,000. But it was money well spent. I listened to your Para Educator of the Year talk about early is best. We believe that too. The last time we did a vision screening here in the library, out of our 27 kids we screened, three babies were referred. We're doing the right thing. You'll also see Leos at Blind American Equality Day, which we have at the Tobacco Museum, which is outfitted with QR codes so that your sight impaired or print disabled children and adults can navigate that museum. We were the first one in the state to do that. But they're kids, so they want to collect towels for puppies. They want to collect peanut butter for puppies. And then we go and visit the puppies and they deliver it. So, we are responsive to the fact that they're 12. We're responsive to the fact that we live in Windsor and Windsor is special. We have unique opportunities. And we're also responsive to the fact that these kids have to function in the community. So, we want them out there. Your Leos did stop out diabetes. Oh my gosh, I've never laughed so hard. We had 120 kids in the auditorium at Sage Park stopping out diabetes. And we moved and we moved for a certain amount of time and it was fun. They made flags from pallets, sending all the money to Camp Rising Sun, a camp for children with pediatric cancer. They have committed two years to Weekend Wheels. They make special birthday cards for the kids and do little birthday bags that go in. They had a pajama day for Connecticut Children's Medical, build the toy closet at Connecticut Children's Medical, and have done many, many environmental freedoms. So, our motto is where there's a need, there's a Leo. So, I asked them, you know, "What do you think in town, people need your help?" And that's a very interesting discussion. Very interesting. I'm sure you can appreciate that. So, now I want to tell you a little bit about, now that you know a little about Leos, I want to tell you a little bit about other youth opportunities that we have as well. Lions Club International sponsors an international, I was outside working in the yard and I'm not sure what's going on. The International Peace Poster Contest. It's held for children ages 11 and up to 13. And for over three decades, we've been doing that. We have never sponsored an international peace poster applicant in the town of Windsor and I would love for that to change. And now that we have more Lions that want to come into the schools and work, hopefully we can make that headway. The theme this year is Lead With Compassion. So, I have an example. This is one of the winning entries. So, this is a worldwide contest. I think Thailand, but I'm not sure. But that's the quality. And from what I've seen by being in the Windsor schools, you can do this because I'm blown away by the stuff you do here. Okay, so this is brand new and I'm very, very, very excited. So, this is the International Peace Essay Contest. For the first time ever, they are opening up an opportunity for visually impaired youth. And I'm so excited, I get chills because we're going to see kids using special applications on their computers to get this done and it will be available here in town. So, I'm more than excited. And it's a huge amount of money if they win. Lead with compassion is also what's going on. The other opportunity that we have, and you should be very proud, you've had three winners, is the Leo Pin Design Contest. What happens? The Leos from all over, not just here, but all over the state, design a pin on paper. That then goes to a committee that makes a choice of the winning design. That pin then goes to the pin designer and it is cast in metal. This was last year's winner and he is a Windsor High School student, Victor Montea. And he was like, "Oh," it was wonderful. But we've had three. So, that's the Leos in a nutshell and thank you so much for listening to me and also the opportunities that we would love to bring forward.
Before you leave, Cindy, I'm just going to see if anybody here has questions for you.
Okay. I can, no, I can, I could talk all night about. Does anyone have a question or a thought? Okay, thank you. Oh, there was one. Oh, you.
Want to talk to the microphone?
Certainly.
First, I want to thank you for what you do. I know we're familiar with you through my work with Windsor Robotics, both of the robotics teams that help out at the craft fair. When talking about putting this on the agenda, I talked to my colleagues about the importance of all the different service organizations we have. Service organizations really supplement everything that's done with limited funds, sometimes from town government. You're that extra. You're more than the icing on the cake. You're the icing and more. And we thank you very much and it's wonderful to have, hear how well you're growing. I know former Board Member Mr. Rithis is part of that as well as his wife Peggy. And I saw Peggy when we were stuffing backpacks for the back to school Office of Family and Community Partnership Block part. And that's probably where you saw Mr. Halleck probably at that event.
Well, I wasn't there, but you went to back to school and spoke with some of the Leo team.
I did, yes. I was actually going to mention that.
That made me think that maybe I should come and give some information. Thank you.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you. You definitely do some great work. I just want to say, no, any way, any way we can partner up with Alliance, whether that's middle school, high school, I think that's a great thing for our kids and for the community at large. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much as well.
And it leads into a requirement when you get to the high school for doing community service. And I'm sure the Leos hit the ground running. I know I feel involved with the Junior Air Force ROTC who, when I talk to those kids and how many community service hours they have, they got hundreds. So, we're doing the right thing and Alliance are very important to us here. So, thanks again for being here.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Next item on the agenda, Ms. Batsholder, introduction of new administrators.
Thank you. So, administrators, new administrators, when I call your name, please stand up so that we can see you. So, first on the list is, she's definitely not new, Ms. Erica Fanjulo. She is now the Assistant Principal at Windsor High School. Ms. Fanjulo has dedicated the past 25 years to Windsor Public Schools in the roles of PE and Health Teacher, PE and Health Lead Teacher, Dean of Students, and honestly, pretty much a lot of other things that she's been thrown over the past few years, as well as the Head Boys and Girls Swimming and Diving Coach. So, congratulations. Our next new administrator, again, not new to Windsor, is Lindsay Jardine, our Secondary Special Ed. Lindsay's been an educator for over 13 years. She has been a Special Ed Teacher, a PLC Leader and a PLC Liaison, has also served as a Team Mentor for Windsor and also has dabbled as the Head Varsity Lacrosse Coach at Windsor High School. Congratulations, Lindsay. Next up is Ms. Nicole Jones. Nicole Jones is, before you... Nicole is actually a former student of Windsor High School, graduate of Windsor High School and also a teacher, English teacher at Windsor High School. For the past five years and five years before that, she taught at a different location in Connecticut. But I also wanted to mention that Nicole was actually chosen as the State Teacher Leader Resident during the 2021-2021 school year. She served as the Educational Consultant across the state for the state of Connecticut. Ms. Tricia Lee is our new Clover Street Principal. She's been an educator for over 20 years. She has served in many leadership roles such as PBIS Lead Facilitator, Data Team Leader, Choice Liaison, Assistant Principal, and now as Principal. But the best part is she is a Windsor resident. And the only reason why I have to come to us sooner is because her and her husband felt that they should let their daughter, her, their daughter have her Windsor High School experience, Windsor experience, before she came in as an employee. So, we're very excited to have Tricia. Next up is Christopher Lorero, is a new Assistant Principal at Windsor High School. Lorero started teaching in 2013 as an English teacher with New Haven Public Schools. He has also served as, in many leadership positions such as AP Coordinator, most recently before he came to... before he came to us, as the AP District Coordinator, and also Building Leader for Summer Academy. Another new, but not new, Megan Means. She is our new STEM Supervisor. Megan has been with the district for the past 18 years. She actually was hired by Dr. Hill 18 years ago. She started her career in 2004 as a math teacher at Windsor High School. She was then promoted in 2013 as the Department Chair, and now promoted again to our STEM Supervisor for 9th through 12th grade. And last, but certainly not least, you have already seen her, but we weren't able to introduce yet, Ms. Derry Thomas. Here, you started her career in 2007 as a Chemistry and Physics Instructor. Just saying those words is a little scary. She then also served as a STEAM Instructional Coach and an Instructional Technology Specialist. And now she is our Assistant Principal at Windsor High School.
Thank you so much, and welcome. I know I've met most of you, newbie's. Next item on the agenda is Audience to Visitor, Miss Daly.
Good evening, this is Robin Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the Board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar, or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the Participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing *9 on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you're called on, you'll be prompted with, you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you very much, and we know we'll have some that will be, could be virtual. So there's 30 seconds left in the three minutes. Mr. Lockhart will raise a red card, and then when it's, the three minutes is over, he'll hold that card up, hopefully until a person recognizes it. It's a little more difficult if you're calling, someone's calling in on the phone to see a red card, unless there's new technology. But in that case, Mr. Lockhart, when there's 30 seconds left, we'll announce that in the speaker. So I guess, first of all, is there anybody in chambers who'd like to address the Board?
Good evening, folks. Happy New Year for the new school year. My name is William Pelkey. I am at 133 Portman Street in Windsor, Connecticut. I'm here for two things to talk about. One, well, you guys probably heard my refrain before, I want to continue that push for technical and career education over college-bound track necessarily. I have a college degree, so there's nothing wrong in my own head not having a college degree. But I, again, want to push the alternatives, especially in light of what we've seen even with President Biden in forgiving student loans. Sometimes college isn't the option, and sometimes we're not going to have the options to give financing for students to go to these technical careers. Again, I went to New Burton High School. You could leave with nursing things. They had all the various shop, different technology, computer-aided design, drafting, and this was 20-some years ago. So all things that you could actually leave right away and actually have something to help your career. Ideally, at some point, I would love to see, like, even getting into a wing of the high school, being a technical school. I have an uncle who graduated from Eastwood and he is now in his 50s, and he did well enough without the college degree that he's in his mid-50s and has been basically retired, save for some Uber Eats driving just to entertain himself and make a little pocket money. But he was able to retire in his 50s without the college degree, but with that technical training that he got at Eastwood High School, so there's that. One other thing as it relates to funding, and I know, Mr. President, that you just talked about the limited funding that we have. The town of Windsor, the Town Council, is now considering a Tax Increment Financing District, a TIF, if you will. We do have one currently with Great Pond, but that's a very different scenario. But this is the first one they're looking to do. And while I don't have an outright problem with the idea per se, the idea of up to, currently it's looking at 70%, 75% of any new funding being refocused back into that district and not into the schools, can actually have a detriment on the amount of money that's coming to this, especially in light of the potential projects that we have. If you throw up an apartment complex that has 100 new units, let's say 20 of them, 25 of them have a student, well, do your per pupil expenditure, let's see how much we actually get out of that increase. So I just, I very much encourage the Board, I would very much encourage members of the public to contact the Town Council members, take a look, think about this, how does this affect? There's plenty of other things in the town, and like I said, I'm not fully against it, but I think the language as currently is, this is something that can last in agreement for 20 years, and the Town Council will have the opportunity to renew it for another 20 years. So that's funding that could potentially be coming here for Windsor Education, but we may not have based on current language. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers that would like to address the Board?
Hi, James Madison, 8th Morris Circle. I just want to say that I'm extremely excited about some of the changes that are taking place in the school. Follow the timeline on this. Dr. Hill had a coffee talk in June, and there was some parents, including myself, who raised a concern around the level of chaos in schools. And, you know, some of that can be attributed to COVID, but, you know, time to lock it down, and Dr. Hill agreed, and he said he had some plans on how to do that. And my question was, how do you plan to propagate that down? Because when you're the leader, you can sit in your office and you can have some ideas, but how do you get that to go down to all the administrators and all the staff and make that happen? And that was my question to him. And he said, that's a little complex for a public forum, lets me off, offline. And so by the time we met, it was the fifth day of school, it was the first week of September. And so my wife and I met with Dr. Hill, and the fifth day, that was that Friday, but that Monday, school started. And I picked up my son from school, and he was complaining like there's no tomorrow about how tight the discipline got. We have to go clockwise around the thing instead of two directions. Kids can't go goofing off with each other. And you have to, you only have two minutes to change classes instead of three. I'm like, yeah, good, one-third reduction in time to goof off, get your kid. And he's like, well, and you can't have backpacks in classrooms. I'm like, good, you don't get that junk, keep it in your locker. And some kid had to turn his shirt inside out because there was some stuff on it, there was some other stuff. Oh, and the principal was threatening detention, and she's so mean, I'm like, yeah, go. And so I said, son, I understand, it's tough. But, you know, I said, listen, there are thousands of students, and there's only so many adults, and they got to keep it under control. And, you know, those are some of the rules. And so I was psyched with that feedback, and that is better ground truth than I could ever get from Dr. Hill on Friday, which was also good, and it was good to hear all the changes going on. But I'm really appreciative of some of the changes, and I also appreciate that when I told Dr. Hill some of these specifics, he said, you know, I wasn't aware of those specifics because Mrs. Jorgensen implemented those herself. I said, even better, because setting direction and letting your subordinate staff then figure out how to do the details is excellent leadership. So I'm extremely excited about that, so I left Ms. Jorgensen a message and told her thank you, and she got back me an email and said, you're welcome. So I love it, and I also said in the December 21, 2021 coffee talk, I said to Dr. Hill and everyone there, if you want to run these schools like a military academy, you go right ahead, you have my support. So thank you.
Anyone else in chambers like to address the Board? None? Anybody online? Ms. Daly?
There are currently no hands raised for the participants, and there are no open questions in the Q and A chair.
I have an objection here. I'll close Audience to Visitor. Next up on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything, there's only a couple of items, do you think it needs to be polled? Pull something, Mr. Hallig? Is there a motion?
Remove that the Board approves Consent Agenda Item 4B, which is the approval of the Board of Education Regular Meetings for 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Hallig. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Extentions? Looking to see what we have from members. I cannot see any chat. Ms. Taylor?
Nothing from me, thank you.
You in favor of the motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 4B?
Yes, we, aye. You probably can't hear us. Yeah, we aye.
Ms. Cantor?
Aye, thank you.
Motion carries 900. Next item?
Remove that the Board approves Consent Agenda Item 4A, which is Human Resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lockhart, second. Mr. Hallig, since this was called, you get first right at the end.
Notice, we'll go through the numbers here, but we did have quite a few resignations, but I was wondering if you could stick to that. I don't know, just enormous number, like, comparison. And to, and of course, hired, maybe if there was some update on the, on the, update hiring, we have all of the hires indeed, maybe you were just, or present this.
Yeah. Aye. So absolutely, Mr. Hallig, so if you could hold till that's all that presents, staff report, I think it'll answer those questions. Okay. Thank you. So there was motion by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Hallig. Is there a motion? Discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Support the motion?
Read the chat.
Cantor?
Aye, yes, thank you.
Next up is a pool of minutes, are there any minutes to be polled? None? Zero motion.
Remove that the minutes listed in 5A to C be approved, which is June 1, 2022 Regular, June 30, 2022 Special, and July 19, 2022 Special.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Posture. Discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Extentions? Yay! Acknowledged. Motion carries 900. Next item is the Student Representative Report. Have a deal.
This year, improvements can be witnessed already across multiple classes in school. The atmosphere this year feels much more positive than last year, much as Mr. Madison mentioned earlier. Everything feels much more structured and organized, though there is always room for improvement. This is only our second year back to normalcy since COVID, and with this, there is an excitement for normalcy. Students are looking forward to many events of post-COVID life. There has also been improvements in SEL, which is Social Emotional Learning, which is of the utmost importance to the student body, as it aids in key life skills such as problem-solving and proper social interaction that promotes mental health. As it becomes more and more implemented and valued in classrooms, it provides students with more opportunities to learn these key life skills. That being said, there are still steps that we can take to make our school one that teaches SEL in the most effective way.
Thank you very much. And are there questions for our student representative? Mr. Wallaston?
No questions, but welcome, and glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. At this point, you're more than welcome to stay, and, but, you know, we've got some things to do, and it sounds like with all the AP classes you've been taking, you can be very free to leave at this time.
Doctor, this has my name on it.
In the future, just letting you know, your people can speak on a, you can, I don't know. Next item on the agenda is the, welcome again to everyone. It's been a busy time already, the school year, and it's great to see that everybody's hitting the ground running. This summer, I was able to attend various events around town. Saw Ms. Lee, Ms. Golinski, Mr. Wallaston, and Ms. Cantor at a block party, Lancaster Woods Block Party, and also saw Ms. Lee at a baseball game, a softball game, with some of our students from Clover, JF County. I'll try to go through some kind of chronological order of things that I attended. I was able to attend a graduation at Windsor High School. Several students who were not able to graduate at the end of the year were able to graduate in August. And they have the diploma like everybody else who graduated a couple of months before them. And it's great to see the number of people who came out, families and friends, to support support them. You know how important high school education is, and it's, wow, so I can't wait to achieve that. I was also able to attend some of the enrichment in summer schools at Windsor High School. Unfortunately, I came near the end, and I was wondering, why didn't the non-enrichment, why there were so few students? And I did find out, I was told that once they finished what they needed to do, they could leave, so as they finished the work that they needed to do. But again, the enrichment was part of federal funds that we've had, that we've known that only is there learning loss that had gone on, but connectivity, students and other students doing activities. And even though it's called enrichment, it doesn't mean it's not really learning that's going on. And it's great to see how well-attended that it was. Also attended the CAPE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Summer Leadership Conference along with Mr. Wallaston, Mr. Lockhart, Dr. Hill. Mr. Lockhart was a panelist on the topic of building a supportive climate for students and staff. We also had a guest as a presenter, who's guest student of our superstars, has that been mentioned to call, Sir Khuti Darasandia from Windsor High School. She was one of two student presenters on the topic of the student voice, and Mr. Lockhart tells me that she's been recruited again for the November CAPE conference that many of us would be holding. I spoke at staff convocation at Windsor High School on August 23rd. Always a special day to see staff visiting with friends that they haven't seen, many of them you haven't seen over the summer, also so many new staff as well. But again, just as we heard tonight from our educator and Paraeducator of the year, it's inspiring. it's an inspiring pause that he gave, kind of as usual from our superstars. You know, to me, my life being a teacher, they're all superstars. We need to continue to remember the importance that's given to educators in Windsor and throughout the state, doing all the things that they do. Social emotional learning this year, past year, and what was needed. We knew, we heard stories of good, good students, students who academically had done well before, who were strong. So it's great to see that we're continuing that after Dr. Elwilly has been a champion of that. Several of us on the board also attended the Office of Family and Community Partnership Back to School Block Party at Windsor High School. It was very well attended, and the only comment that I had was the lack of food. It was too, there were too many people there. By the time I had seen most of the principals and gone around to see all the principals of the schools, I went over to see if there was food, and they were cleaning up already. Hills promised me if they have that again that way, that you will see to it that there's additional food. It was great to see so many board members, staff representatives, and Mr. Panos, Mr. Wallaston, Mr. Lockhart, Ms. Taylor as well. I've been attending some of the sporting events at Windsor High School. I've attended the boys' football game against Weathersfield, which was a nail biter. Unfortunately, we lost by one point. Saw a boys' soccer game against Hartford Public, and the girls' soccer game against Enfield, where I saw Mr. Panos. I'm sure Ms. Taylor has been going to all the volleyball games, as her daughter's on the JV team there. Have not been to swimming yet, to get to swimming and volleyball, and field hockey, any other sport that I've missed so far. On October fourth, we will be having a special board meeting on achievement. A lot of testing that had gone on wasn't ready until the end of the year, and Dr. Sims said that he will be presenting this fall, so excited about seeing that, and seeing how we improve the achievement here at Windsor Public Schools. As I mentioned, there's a convention of Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, as well as the superintendent's organization, and that's coming up in November, and most of the board members here are attending, except for me and Dr. Hill as well. That's my report. Any questions? Seeing none. Next item of business is setting the graduation date for Windsor High School class of 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. Each year, the Board of Education must vote on the date for graduation. We are requesting the Board approve Wednesday, June fourteenth, 2023, as the date for graduation. Graduation will be held at the Bushnell in Hartford. Excuse me, state law now allows the graduation date to be set early on in the school year.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. President, move the Board of Education approve Wednesday, June fourteenth, 2023, and the graduation date for the class of 2023. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Panos. Are any discussion or questions for Dr. Hill? Mr. Lockhart? Just want to note that last year, when we set the date, we set it for a time where the town council could not attend, and we took that into consideration to make sure it wasn't on a Monday. So hopefully this year, the town council will be able to attend the graduations on this timeline. Thank you. So the motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Extension, motions carries nine zero zero. Next is the superintendent's report, Dr. Hill.
Thank you again, Mr. President. So you've said a few things I'll touch, but I won't repeat everything. So we had this year's convocation, and you know, I appreciate the comments of the visitor and our student rep. I too believe that we are off to a great start this year. There are definitely a different level of energy across the district. I've also, I've been to two superintendent meetings for Hartford area, and it seems to be pretty much the norm for other districts as well. They're feeling like there's definitely a much more upbeat feeling, and people are really looking forward to this year by more so than they have in the past two years. So I'm just hoping that the team across the district, we just keep that moving, and that translates into greater outcomes for our students as well. I would like to thank the Windsor Chamber of Commerce and the Windsor Historical Society for hosting the new teacher luncheon this past August. This year, new teachers are treated to an ice cream social on the lawn of the Historical Society after a bus ride through town. I've always been impressed with the partnerships and the connections that we have with various town organizations since I first encountered Windsor in 2002, and never disappointed. There's always organizations willing to do something for folks in the district, especially our new people. I think it's a great way to welcome them and give them a feeling of belonging and being brought into a family here in Windsor Public Schools. As President Fury said, on August twenty-fifth, we had our first district-wide Office for Family and Community Partnerships block party. This was an idea that I had after seeing the cookouts, and I know some parents, like they miss it, they're concerned, but my idea here was the cookouts at each individual school, which can still happen at some point, right? You don't have to wait for one summer day to do a cookout. I use my grill all year, so they can do it. But I wanted to have something that brought the whole community together in one place, and our biggest spaces are the two campuses between the middle school and the high school, and I thought it was wonderful. As leader, I'll take the blame for running out of food. It won't happen again. I think more people showed up than we expected, and that just happens, right? When there's something new, at times people don't show up, and at other times, you know, people show up a lot. We'll definitely make sure we take care of the ice cream people, as I understand it was a, you know, ice cream rebellion, so we'll make sure that that's fixed. And I also got a suggestion that we include other more ethnic foods, so we'll be reaching out to folks, maybe those who are listening out there in the community, you may be tapped to bring some of your best dishes to the block party, because we hope to do it again. And I want to thank Ms. Christine Morales and her team and in her office for putting this together. I think they did a wonderful job, and I never want to go without thanking folks for putting in an effort. I had the idea in the winter, and I kind of threw it out there to the leaders, and she was like, I'd like to take that on. She did, and I can say she did it. I didn't have to do much follow-up with her, she just kind of kept me the rest of what was going on and made it happen, and I like when I can just show up and put on a T-shirt. That's a good thing. So thank you very much, Christine. Students came back on August twenty-ninth. Cabinet Central Office administrators visited all the schools on the first day of school, as has been the tradition. As I said already, the overall vibe was very upbeat and positive. Students and staff were engaged in activities throughout the day. One of the things too that I have promised to do, and I told the administrators here, is to be in the schools even more, so I have committed to being in the schools every single week. So I mean, I have every school every single week, but I'm going to be in the schools every single week, and it's two-fold. One, I get my high from the classroom. I am an educator, so I enjoy seeing teaching and learning going on, and quite honestly, superintendent's office can get boring if I shock some people, so I want to be in a school as much as I can. The other is I want staff to know that I'm very serious about us moving and doing greater performance in terms of teaching, learning, and student outcomes. So you have something as a leader, you have to not only state it, but you have to also role model and show that this is important. So I believe that my presence on a regular basis will show folks that this is something that I really want, you know, to happen in the district. And the other piece that has to be in place when I talk about culture is actually the behavior, right? And so, no, we're not going to have, I have to tell the student, we're not going to have a military school at all. My time in the military was enough for me, but we will, you know, continue to have a school that's in order, because students learn best when there's not chaos, just to use words that were thrown out, or disorder going on. So I want students to feel that they're, they can give their best, and they can learn at their best, and teachers to feel that the teaching environment is optimal for teaching and learning, so I want to continue to be present. So if you hear, like, he's always here. I'm not going to stop, but just wanted to give you a heads up. Okay. And next, update on facilities. The Windsor High School track is now complete, and the new scoreboard has been installed. Unfortunately, I was not feeling well for that first football game, so I didn't get to see the scoreboard. I trust, because I haven't heard from anyone, that all the lights in the scoreboard worked, so we can see all the numbers. Maybe our numbers were a little off. So I'm not one who's good at losing, so I expect Coach Lee to really light the ship and the students to do that. And my final thought before I actually have to dispatch out there is my coffee talks will continue this school year. The first one is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, at ten thirty a.m. at The Bean on Broad Street. The schedule for coffee talks is also posted on the website, so those will continue. That's something I started last year, for anyone who's not familiar. I don't like to respond to a bunch of emails. I know people love writing a superintendent, and I know that's historically what's been done, and I think you've seen over the last two years, it doesn't work for me, because it doesn't really solve things, because you can't convey feelings and emotion very much in an email, unless you just want a flat piece of information. But I always invite folks to, either you set up a meeting with me, we can meet in my office, if it's that important, but I prefer that people come to the coffee talks twofold. We get to meet each other, and I get to engage with people, and also, your question could be a question that actually impacts others in the town. So there are very few questions that are really all that individual, although many believe that, so I want those questions brought out. And also, quite honestly, I've learned in thirty years, this is now my thirtieth year, I started in nineteen ninety-two, that some questions that people want to ask you privately, they will not ask that question when there's a group. And so I've determined in thirty years and twenty years of that being in leadership, that question was not really that important, and the community has shared with me, and as I run into people across town, they've appreciated these talks and the candor, and I will continue to give it to them straight, and if I don't have an answer, as I tell them each time, I will get you an answer very quickly. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ms. Dale, your bachelor, to give us an update on everyone's favorite topic since COVID began, besides quarantine, is transportation.
Dispatch out?
Okay, so I'm sure everyone knows, we have had somewhat of a rocky start. It was absolutely better than last year, but we still are short on drivers. So we currently have four drivers that, or excuse me, two drivers that will be returning this coming, this coming school week, and then two drivers that are currently in training, so we will have four additional drivers by October first. Once those four drivers are back and added, we will be fully staffed for the actual routes. And I say that with a little caveat, because all that means is we are stacked for all of our current routes. If one person calls out, we're now short. So we have forty-five routes, we have forty-five drivers. Currently, we do have drivers that we're pulling from Creck and from other surrounding towns that just have a few more drivers, and they've been helping us out. So these four additional ones will allow those four to then go back to their original yards, but again, we would call on them if we need to, if we have subs. Part of the, another problem we have faced this past couple, excuse me, weeks is our drivers are riding or driving, excuse me, in the morning and then calling out in the afternoon, so making our afternoon routes delayed by a lot, unfortunately, OE, Amp Aquanic are definitely feeling the brunt of all of that, and it just so happens to be both those schools and those of the littlest people we have. I know both principals and assistant principals are, you know, having monitors on the bus, pair as anyone we can get to at least help with the bus routes for the students, but that's what we're facing currently. Any questions?
Yeah, let's, let's do questions now about anything that's been sent today, so. Panos, it looks like you want to raise your hand.
Yeah, well, so between now and October first, there's no guarantee of being on time with all buses. Pretty much certain that we're not going to be on time with them.
Right, so every morning, every morning, Terry, who is our dispatcher, or excuse me, our manager of Daco, will send an email to all principals and admin assistants of the schools and let them know which buses are delayed. Some are delayed for the bus stop and not the school, happens mostly at the high school, a little bit at Sage, but again, it's the trickle-down effect, so the elementaries are always the worst when we have any delays or driver shortages. Currently, we only have one bus that actually drops and then goes back out. And again, it drops at Clover, and then it goes back out for OE making it.
For the same school, no?
For the same time, so the bus will drop at Clover, drop all the students off at Clover for, say, eight-thirty, and then they're just starting their OE run at eight-thirty, when school starts at eight-thirty. That's our, that's one bus that we have in that predicament right now. Aquanic, bus eleven was like that, we recently just got a driver, so that has been better, not perfect, but it's not an hourly.
If you know that, is there anything we can do, I mean, add costs, but is there anything, small buses, we can do to accommodate that?
It's the drivers that we don't have, it's not the buses.
Well, the same license, the same license.
There's a service now, it's a good question.
Yep, so the small type-two buses are an additional license. The only non-additional license is an STV or like a minivan that you or I would drive, which will not help for.
There's no conveyance that we could use at all, whether it was the, I mean, even something, even something very small, sort of ten kids or something like that.
We, so we, we did add that, well, not, we, Daco added that, added two more type-twos to our routes in lieu of the bigger buses in order to help out or to shorten other runs so we could get on the, on the road quicker for the elementary tier. But again, it goes back to drivers, even drive, we don't have drivers, even for the STVs, unfortunately, we don't have drivers. We have our dispatchers actually driving at times, and then there's no one at the office.
And there's no alternative, you know, I don't, does Uber offer a service?
Um.
No.
I'll speak to that when she's done. Oh, no, no, no.
So, I mean, state law, you can't, those type of.
Well, a parent could offer an Uber to their child, right?
I'm sorry? I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Can I just, a student, a, a, a parent, if they saw their child is late, they call Uber, child, no? Not allowed?
So you're, you're supposed to be eighteen years old to ride an Uber, but I want to be clear, because I get what you're saying, you're trying to be helpful, but I want to make sure the public understands, so Windsor Public Schools is not offering up Uber, we're not sponsoring Uber, we're not promoting Uber at all, and we have to be careful, because there have been some issues around those kinds of organizations with students, so I want our families and our students to be very careful. So we are not recommending Uber.
Okay, so I guess what I just simply get, you know, I'm not, I'm the favorite Uber, I've stuck a Lyft.
We're not offering up Lyft, Uber, the taxi, my taxi, none of those.
I'm just saying, is there any sort of other than Daco-type service that is served, without having one of those large buses or whatever it requires in order to get some special four-month long, I have no idea why it takes four months to get a license, but it's, you know, something that will fit and take care of the current problem for the end of September, which I guess will be much. For the end of September, which I guess will be much, potentially, anytime somebody's listening, you're going to be going through this, so that's, yeah.
So they're still actively recruiting, and these are just in the pipeline, if you will. So, uh, what we have done is push some of our, um, students on type-two buses to Haven, which is another transportation company we've always, um, had for special ed services. Um, because they do, um, have, you know, seven to ten passenger vehicles that we have put, um, more special ed students over to Haven. So then we free up Daco for the bigger buses to, I mean, we've, we're, we're doing that currently. This is not, I mean, it's nationwide driver shortage.
All right, the, the, this is a call, the issue to do, uh, for, if you can't, can you be a regular update to report to, sorry, that these, those buses that are going to be twenty minutes late, we can get to the cell phones of all the, you know, parents, so that they, they know to wait or to decide to take the child to school.
Right, so, yep, so after we talked, um, a week or two ago, um, I did, um, pass that along to Daco. And so they've been implementing that. Um, but again, so that list that we received every morning last year, we were receiving it for ten to twelve buses. We're receiving it for about four or five buses right now. So the, it's not as massive as it was last year by any means. Um, I know people aren't happy because it's still affecting their children, even if it's only one bus. But we are, Daco is now sending out updates, um, in the morning.
Exactly, every half an hour or something like that, so you, I mean, for every, every level, let's just say, every, every school level, please. Start with the high school, the middle school. So there should be a, we should be able to send out to those buses, to all the people who are on bus twenty-one or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
So they can get an update, so that they know, uh, your bus is coming out ten minutes early.
Right.
And you know it's going to be half an hour late.
Right. So again, so it, that initial email goes out from Daco to all principals and assist, and admin assistants at about six-thirty in the morning. It really does not affect high school or middle school, because that's tier one and two. It's all on the elementary that's really getting the, the lateness. So they have been informed to then send another update as soon as they know. So if that bus at Sage doesn't even get out of Sage parking lot until, say, seven-thirty, when it really should be leaving Sage by seven-fifteen, they're already contacting the school to then make that additional Robo-Park.
Okay, but if you're missing four buses, let's say, you know which four buses there are, and so therefore they're going to be late, sure, right?
Yep, but also...
That's going to affect, that's going to affect all schools.
So now, we have three tiers. So if the high school gets held up for whatever reason, it could be traffic, it could be an accident, for whatever reason, that's now going to affect middle and hot, middle and elementary, no matter what.
Uh, 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 I think, okay, I, I think I'm going elsewhere. You, you know that there's, you, you don't have four drivers.
Yes.
Okay, so, does that mean that out of the gate, those four, four bus runs are going to be late? How, how do you handle that?
So two buses, two routes right now are covered, so the four routes are cut to two right now, for two buses. So we have, instead of four drivers, we have two drivers, instead of four routes, we have two routes. So we combine two buses as long as we can, based on number of kids. So those buses, like, there's one at Clover, I know. We actually, the parents now know the time, because they know those two buses are combined right now. And until we get that driver coming back, they're going to stay at that time. They still get the email, they still get the notification, but every day it's late.
Okay. So, so I'm emphasizing that we should be able to inform the parents how, how late is approximately, so...
We can, absolutely, but I just, I want to just point out, we can't, we are, we can inform when we're informed. So, and I'm, I'm not trying to push it back on Daco, but there are drivers that don't call into base if they're late. If they're out of that ten-minute window, they are supposed to call the base and supposed to report it. There are drivers that do not do that. No matter how much I put pressure on them, they don't do it. They're not our employees, I can't, it's up to Daco to figure that out, as the employer. But there are absolute drivers that don't call, so we don't know if they're late. And that's where, that's the biggest issue, I think, because we can notify till the cows come home if we get the notifications.
Jill, you've been waiting, so floor is yours.
You're on mute, Jill. Miss Keanter, you're on mute.
Thank you. Um, I know it's the beginning of school, uh, we're into three weeks, but I've had a lot of my constituents calling me for, they said it's the same problem again, we're on year two. No resolution, no phone calls. I had someone contact me this week. Their child goes to Sage Park, the school starts at five of eight, the bus still wasn't there at eight-fifteen. They called Daco and they said the bus is on its way. So they never had any announcements made to them. So, you know, I know that Windsor Public Schools contracted with Daco. I, I think more needs to be done for notification, and I realize that there's a shortage of bus drivers, but I think we have to look for more opportunities. And I think as Windsor Public Schools hired Daco, you need to constantly contact them, because I'm getting contacted. And they are, the parents are contacting Daco, and I think it's unreasonable to say the bus is on the way when school started at five of eight and it's eight-fifteen, the bus is still not there. Thank you.
Mr. Lockhart? He had Daco before us in May. Said that he worked with some of his, like, this, well, period, work up issues. But I, I want to say, I, I filled a lot of calls. I've been personally affected by this, I have a big child into, oh, Quonic almost, you know, or so. Just passed, they first, nine, nineteen, and I also have a lot of calls. So I understand the frustration, I'm quite frustrated as well, but I share with the committee. Um, I believe, one, Dr. Danielle, I'm doing a great job in addressing the matter. Number two, it's, um, it's, it's all on Daco. And there, there's no way that we can sugarcoat this. At the end of the day, we get the notification at six-thirty. Any other future notifications that we are requesting, um, I believe Dr. Hill, through Danielle, or through Dispatch over there has called and made their request. Um, I've personally been getting the notifications when the buses are coming late, um, bus twenty-five and bus eleven, um, just for transparency. Um, but at the end of the day, what needs to happen is that Daco needs to just give us a little bit more customer service to make sure that their drivers are following their, their policies that they set, to make sure that we can have well-informed parents. Because we got parents that have to go to work, got kids that are, it's because it's getting darker, the time is changing, it's going to be getting colder, and it's, it's a safety issue for me at this point. I just think that, um, we need a little bit more from Daco, because I truly believe, and if Windsor Public Schools, if any of our entities were holding up Daco in any way, shape, or form, it would be in here really, really holding Dr. Hill and his board very accountable for those things. So we have to do better, and I'm hoping that, um, Daco is listening very clearly to our superintendent's matter. This is something we take very seriously. I do understand other school districts in the state and the country are going through that. I truly sympathize, but to hear that Daco is pulling from other towns, um, is not good, because that pendulum is going to come back around. We're going to be well-staffed, and if another town is falling short, we'll pull from Windsor. At the end of the day, Daco is going to take care of Daco and pull their resources wherever they can to make sure they meet their contracts. And at the end of the day, um, the children of Windsor Public Schools or any child in the state of Connecticut, they're not paused, um, just to maintain a contract. So Daco, I respectfully request you to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else on this, Mr. Hallow?
Um, I just had a question. Um, um, are there any, any maybe, uh, private, uh, transportation companies in the area that might be able to help us solve this issue?
So, yeah, un- unfortunately, no. I, I mean, every school district, I, I belong to, obviously, to the listserv, um, for all of my positions in every district in Connecticut. And we're actually, and I hate to even say it, we're actually on the good side. I have districts that are at fifteen drivers shortage, eight driver shortage, um, and we're at four. It's not great, but it's better. I, I hate even saying that, but that's the reality. Um, so all bus, I mean, even my town in my district, it's, you know, every morning I'm getting that call.
The concern for me is, so what if we have another round of COVID and that goes to our buses? You know, what are we going to do in a situation like that?
What's that question?
Uh, if, if COVID hits again, so it, it will, we will be doubling up, then we will be very late to school.
Anyone else with questions? One thing, uh, I'll say then, is, um, following up on Mr. Lockhart, we, we had Daco in here. I was really hoping that during the summer, that this would be, we'd be in the best, I know we're better off than we were at the end of last year, but... It's all about money. Daco wants to make their profit and what they can, even if they wanted to pay above probably the union wage that's there. With bonuses, they may have chosen not to do that. And so here, here we are, and I know my feeling is, is if, if this is not better by the next meeting, we have another month, in my opinion, that, you know, I'll, I'd, I'd like to have our attorney, you know, spending our money, but I think it's well-spent, because this is affecting learning now, and especially at the elementary schools, but across, across the district. And see what pressure that our attorney can have on, on Daco in looking at it about alternatives. So again, I know it's the beginning of the school year, I know we're better off than we were before. When Daco came here in May, we asked them, what's the ideal number? And it wasn't the number of routes, it was because drivers do get sick. They do have conflicts, uh, I didn't know about picking up the afternoon routes, um, but they said they wanted ten percent more. So for us, that would mean four to five more drivers. So even if we get fully staffed, we really need, to Daco's own words, four or five more drivers. Guess we'll move on to, uh, the next item, unless you have anything else under your part, we'll do a staffing update. Dispatch over.
Right.
The next agenda?
Yeah, okay.
Am I doing the next agenda?
This, this, we're, we're done with the buses?
Done with the buses.
Staffing update, dispatch over.
Okay, so, um, as we do every year, um, I'll provide a staffing update. So we have had, um, a good, successful, uh, hiring season, in my opinion. Um, we were lucky that, um, we were able to actually go back in person to career fairs. Um, so we had, uh, gosh, I think close to fifteen of our administrators at the Yukon Fair back, um, last April, I believe. Um, and we were able to actually hire people right then and there. Obviously, they didn't talk to me yet, but they had that verbal conversation with the principal or supervisor. Um, all of our advertising is still, um, saying the same through all of our media outlets. Um, just to give you a, a little snapshot of what hiring looks like. So every teacher administrator is hired through a panel at the school level, um, with administrators and other teachers and other staff members. Um, in the end, they always, um, if it's a certified teaching position, they come through me before they are hired as another layer of, um, an interview. If it is anyone above the teacher, uh, they would meet with myself and Dr. Hill. Um, I was very excited about new teacher orientation this year. We did kind of change it up a bit, um, not that the old way was bad under Dr. Hill, but I did change it up a bit, so, um, just joking. So, and no, it's all seriousness, though. So, uh, one of the things we did change, and thank, uh, for Bonnie Fine, man. So instead of like the grueling hot bus tour for about forty minutes that people have gotten sick on, motion sickness, um, I asked Bonnie to do Bonnie, and she did a great, um, history lesson, if you will, um, and made it fun. And they were competing on just different fun facts about Windsor. Um, and they definitely all loved it. I mean, Bonnie had, that Bonnie had new teachers running up together, trying to buzz a horn to try to answer. I mean, it was, it was a lot of fun. Um, and then after that, we went to the Historical Society, which was a little different this year, too. Instead of having everyone inside in the Historical Society, where you can't see anything but each other, because you're all stuffed in, we did an outside venue of just an ice cream social. So then it opened on the Historical Society, um, buildings. So all of our staff actually went and actually could tour and visit and, um, just, they were just doing all the different, um, activities that they could do that if anyone, you know, went to visit would do. So, um, we got great feedback, um, from that visit as well. Our stats, so overall, we had eighty-seven new employees. This includes all staff, paras, teachers, administrators, SCL specialists, behavior tech, food service, safety monitors. Um, and of the newly hired certified staff, five of those were contracted last year at the end of the school year. So it was a limited contract, and now they are fully on board with a teacher contract for this year. And of the newly hired certified staff, which was forty-nine, the breakdown between male and female was twenty-two point four-five percent male, seventy-seven point five-five percent female. Um, and of the newly hired staff, twenty-one point four of them are educators of color, which is bringing our district percentage total to twenty-one point one-five. And to answer your question, Mr. Panos, from earlier, um, you had said that we had a large resignation. Uh, so it wasn't actually, we've had much larger, uh, we had forty-one resignations. So of those resignations, five were limited staff. Um, seven of those people would not have, uh, been offered another contract with Windsor Public Schools. Nine of them went to other districts because they pay more during that middle section of the salary scale, which I have talked ad nauseam about, that we have to add money into the, you know, step three to step eight to keep our teachers. Three moved out of state, three people actually got job advancements, so they left for, um, more or less a promotion. Two left education altogether, and four of them were on leave of absence or family medical leave for child rearing or from COVID that just said, I'm not coming back. That sums it up for me.
Thank you. Questions for Dispatch?
Well, it is an unusually hard number of nominations, I, I'd be surprised.
Eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven was that we hired, district-wise?
Hired.
Eighty-seven is paras, SCL specialists, administrators.
Teachers, certified, exactly. Forty-one, forty-one, well, that does sound quite, that does sound high.
I just outlined what the reasons...
She just wrote me down, so...
Want me to say it again, Mr. Panos? Do you want me to read the reasons why people left again?
Uh, yes, well, you, you, you...
Sure.
Forty-one, and you say, uh, you could just say the, uh, a breakdown of that. Okay, go ahead.
Say it. So...
I'll hear you this.
Okay, I'll send an email, too, if you want.
Yeah.
Five were limited, contract, five were limited contracts. So we hired them at the end of last year, um, just fill in for a month or two. Nine people went to other school districts for more money. Three people moved out of state. Three people got job advancements. Two got out of the profession altogether. Two said, educated... Two said education is not for me. Four, um, were FMLAs or leave of absences from COVID, so from two years ago that they've been extended leave of absence and then just said, I'm not coming back. And nine of them would not have been offered another contract with Windsor Public Schools.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Back to Dr. Hill. Miss Batshill, sorry, this will be twenty twenty-two year end, I guess. First, I'm going to see the zero motion. The board approves the return of two thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars to the town with details of projected budget class category surpluses, the deficit. Final amount of project is the conclusion of the audit.
So, um, it's very similar to what I presented in June, um, we still haven't had our audit yet. We're actually, the town always says auditors are in the house starting this week, so yesterday they're at town hall and they'll be, um, at, uh, the Board of Ed Office is within the next couple of weeks. So, uh, our return amount is, um, two thousand one hundred eighty-six, that's, um, one of the lowest we've ever had. Um, but I have updated you guys, um, throughout the year last year. Um, special intuition was an issue, is an issue, so I will definitely keep everyone abreast of that as the months go on for this school year.
Question? So I guess, even though we're giving a small number, the town is is going to be reversed because of special ed. If it doesn't come back to us, the state, or gives it to the town, it'll be a larger amount.
They got six hundred thousand dollars more than they thought they would.
Thank you.
From the state.
I want to make sure that was clear. Is motion.
However.
Under the, under the.
Yeah, yeah, just commenting that we, we are supposed to get more, but the state does not give us all what they.
We only get.
Made these promises thirty, thirty years, thirty, forty years ago, they keep making these promises. Not worth much, anyway.
Motion, uh, made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, aye, extension, motion carries nine zero zero. Committee reports, I'm assuming there are no committee reports. The matters announcements, regular board meeting. Board of Ed Special Meeting Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M, in the LPW Boardroom. Next regular board meeting is Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M, in the boardroom. Audience visitors, Ms. Daly, uh, why don't we start with people who might be online or on the.
Good evening, this is Rob in Daly from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar. And by clicking the raised hand icon or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak, please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Is there anybody online who wishes to address the?
There are no hands raised at the moment, but, um, there, oh, and, uh, there was a comment after the last audience visitors closed. Uh, and actually she responded saying that her question has been answered over the course of the meeting. So, uh, there are no other additional new comments and there are no raised hands.
Anybody in the boardroom would like to address the board?
Definitely dinner's been postponed for another few minutes, it's been three. Um, yeah, okay, Will Pelkey, one thirty-three Portman Street again. Um, just going off some Bureau of Labor Statistics, uh, this is the federal government looking at their things, uh, and their different reports. Now, the federal government lags behind, obviously, in real time and of course, COVID really destroyed things on that. But looking at the U S Bureau of Labor and Statistics and looking at salaries for vocational and technical careers. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Lockhart would be pleased to know that fire supervisor or captain is actually one of the highest in the country. Uh, for those, and I know Windsor just, uh, started that program here at the high school. Uh, I would definitely love to hear an update at that, at a very future meeting, how that seems to be going. Um, and, uh, so I'm just putting that out there. But a lot of, the top seven, actually, according to the federal government, are all jobs, and this is from four years ago. Are all jobs north of sixty thousand dollars a year for starting, so if you think about it, potentially no student loan and four more years of earning or at least maybe four years earlier towards retirement, so again, just pushing that technical education. Then one last thing, it made me think of it, uh, when it came to buses, I've already spoken to a few board members. Uh, I have experienced on my street, Portman Street, uh, buses speeding on the street. And it's one of those things, I live three from, three houses down from the intersection of Henry and Portman. Um, yeah, I don't have my radar gun out by any means, but just like we all do, you know when somebody's going much faster now. Did I get a bus number or something? No, I had my hands turning wrenches inside of the brakes of the car. Um, I did have my neighbor, she was bringing out her trash cans and this was the very first week of school. I did have one driver, uh, stop and talk to her for a brief moment, you know, somebody fine being neighborly. But he said, yeah, I'm just killing time tooling around waiting to, uh, uh, for the next, whatever the afternoon pickup was gonna be, so. We just have someone who's joyriding a school bus around the neighborhood, eating fuel up and, you know, I don't know how the pay works, but just wanted to put that out there, that, uh, that was just one employee, everybody has a bad day or is doing something every once in a while, employees have it. Um, but again, the, uh, the buses on my street, I have noticed are going far faster than they ought to be. And, uh, when I can, I'll try to get a number or license plate or something to do that, but just something that I've noticed and, uh, that's it. Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to address the board? At this point, um, um, I'd, I'd like to vote because we didn't, we postponed the, uh, the school liaison reports. Um, ask if they want to, anybody wants to say something, uh, regarding any of the schools, I know many of you have not met yet. Uh, principals, et cetera, but let me, or if you have any other announcement you'd like to make, I'd like to start with.
I have none. I have none, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howlin.
Thank you, um, I'll start with Sage, Sage, uh, Park, um, during the, uh, you know, the, the, the block party, um, um, I got to speak to any of the, of the great staff that work at Sage Park as well. Teachers as soon as I can. Yes, some great conversation there, the, you know, Leo Club, which was mentioned earlier. Um, also, Principal Jorgensen has, um, a coffee talks of her own coming up. On September eighth, twenty ninth, and thirty, so, the sixth grade, twenty eighth, work, um, each day, that's. Seven, great. Um, two days, um, she's starting that, um, starting at seven, seven fifteen A M, until eight o'clock. So, I think that's great. As far as announcements, um, I want to welcome back all our teachers, our staff and our students. Hopefully, everyone had a great summer. I also want to thank everyone who came out and participated. You know, having tried, whether you, uh, cared, you ran the race, um, definitely a great event and one of, one of my favorite things, um, throughout the year. Just coming up that hill and making, making the, the turn and everyone cheering you on and you really feel like a rockstar in that moment. So, um, and then finally, um, um, I just, I just would like to say, um, I'm happy birthday to my son. I'm basically one year old yesterday.
He's probably still watching, he should be. Come on, take it, get him the bet. Thank you. Mr. Wallis, sir?
Um, well, first things first, uh, we're halfway, halfway there, right? So, uh, congrats on everybody making it thus far and our great new addition. We're glad to have you here, um. Yeah, just in light of that, I've been thinking a lot about our purpose and our mission here at the board. And I'm hoping that we can use this halfway point as a time to reflect on, um, just why we're here and what our mission is to do as a collective team, superintendent in his office included. Um, yeah, I've just been, just been pondering that a little bit, maybe it's a little midterm crisis or such, but. Um, in addition to that, we, uh, met yesterday at Windsor High for their School Governance Council. Um, and we, uh, had a in-person meeting, it was the first time I've had one. I hope to have more in the future because it was pretty, um, the, the energy and the collaborativeness when we all come together in person is just different, so it was really nice to be in person. And, um, two issues that they spoke on were, that we talked around were, um, the ending of food services, the free and reduced lunch. And the second would be, um, cultivating, uh, cultivating, like classroom environment to increase engagement. And, um, just to keep students that have trouble in class, in class and coming to class on time. Um, just to touch on the first part, um, I hope, maybe it's the midterm crisis speaking, but I hope, hope, hope we can do something about, um, banning of food services because it touches me personally. I, as I told, um, Governance Council, I'm one of, uh, uh, ten, I have nine siblings. Two parents got married real young and just kept popping them up, so here I am at number eight. And, um, towards the beginning, with the first few children, the way, um, free and reduced lunch works, we were getting free and reduced lunch, but when they start getting older, even though my parents are still financially supporting the older people who are not in district or they're not in the school system, they're still putting out money towards those kids. But the amount of support that the younger kids that come down, me being eight, it goes down from being free to be reduced. And as we go on, less reduced, less reduced. So it's an issue that touches me personally because as you see, I wear glasses and in education, my educational career, my two biggest, uh, barriers to education is eyesight, and was those lunches. Because having ten kids, having to put that, you know, twenty dollars a week, it starts to multiply a little bit and it can become a, a real bill. So I know my situation is unique, but I know everyone's situation in the school is unique. So I feel like this is something that we've got to be brainstorming about and be extremely compassionate about because kids got to eat. And the same way we're trying to do SCL and cultivate and ignite a passion for education in, uh, students' hearts, it's gonna be real hard to do on an empty stomach. And not everyone is, is, um, old enough to, to march on down and, and say, I need help. And a lot of people are afraid, are afraid to say, I need help, try to get the help and then not be able to get the kind of help that they thought they could get or just be turned away. I hope going forward, this term, or not this term, but on this side of the term, we got a year in, we see how we can work with each other, hopefully we can brainstorm it and just get something, get something good done for the kids that we love and serve.
Thank you. Ms. Kalinski?
Thank you, I have just a few updates. I met with, um, Mr. Gruber and Mr. Wood from O E, and they were extremely happy with how this school year has started out. So aside from the bus transportation, last year, the parents dropping off their kids was much larger and it created a lot of havoc within the school. This year alone, I would say within the first week, they got it completely under control. And the cars are not going out into the middle of Kennedy's Road anymore. It, it's very, they've done a very great job with that, so, um, kudos to the staff, the security monitor, who has definitely helped with that. And then, of course, to the parents who were literally understanding how to drop off their children effectively. So that's been really good. Um, they also had their open houses passed, not yesterday, but the Monday before, I think that was September twelve. And that was the first open house where the entire school was able to come all at once since pre-pandemic and it was a huge success. I, uh, my, my family went and we had to park all the way around in the back, that's where we were like parking down in the fields. Um, but it was standing room only in the cafeteria and you could just tell everyone was excited to be there to learn about the school and just hear what was gonna be different this year from last year. So that in itself was just a wild success and I think it's really, uh, jumpstart to the year to just be on the right track and have everyone excited. So, kudos to O E, I mean, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Taylor, any comments? Ms. Taylor, can you hear us?
Yeah, it says my connection is unstable, of course, right when I need to speak, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, first of all, I hear that our JV and varsity girls volleyball team's won tonight, so that's number one. Um, and just encouraging everyone in the community to come out to those sports that maybe aren't as popular, um, to support them as well. We have some amazing scholar athletes in Windsor, um, so if you haven't, you know, t- uh, ducked your head, um, into a lacrosse game or volleyball game or a swim meet, um, I encourage you to do so, um, but also, uh, encourage you to, to, you know, do a, a football game as well. But, um, all, all of our athletes are, are really working hard, um, straight off and throughout the summer they were working, so. Uh, kudos to all of the parents, it is not easy to have an athlete in Windsor because the curriculum is definitely hard and they have to keep up no, no matter how late they got home at night. Um, so that's my sharing for the evening, thank you.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, I'd like to welcome everybody back, I look forward to this year, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. And I'm going to be trying to attend more activities in Windsor at the schools and just the town events. And it's really good to see everybody, even during the summer, I hope everybody had a great summer. And I look forward to being at the next board meeting. Oh, and the important thing, Dr. Hill, is I'm not running a COVID den now.
Thank you.
I'll see you later.
Lockhart?
I'm gonna be meeting with the new principal on Friday.
Yes, sir.
Kind of busy during the summer with SBA, CRAK, CADE. Um, not gonna go through everything, but the high points are, I was appointed by the majority leader, Jason Rojas, to serve on a working group of air quality for all the buildings in the state of Connecticut. Um, of that, so that meet, first meeting is tomorrow. Also, I've got a CRAK meeting tomorrow on behalf of Windsor, I think I'm double booked there. Um, and, um, just for transparency for the board, um, I attended the leadership, SBA leadership uh, conference in San Antonio this past, um, August, July, August. And I was nominated to serve as Northeast Regional Director on the National Board. So looking for confirmation, taking twenty twenty-three in Orlando. So, um, it was something I was not looking for, I was kind of tapped on the shoulder. Um, I've done a lot of advocating and planning and fighting, someone tapped me on the shoulder and said, you are what we need on the board. So, um, we'll see what Orlando brings, but I think I will be wearing yet another hat. Uh, but I, I personally think that bringing Windsor everywhere we go and making sure that we have a seat at every table possible. And gain, gain from those experiences and bring them back to town, make our town better and make our state better, so. I'm excited about the opportunity and the prospects of it and hopefully, um, I don't get put on my couch anytime soon by taking up these hats, so. That's all I got. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Panos? What?
I just, if I start, you know it's gonna happen, so if you want me to start.
No, no, sorry. Look at, thank, thank you, Mr. Panos. Looking for emotion. Oh, do, do you have any comments, Mr. President?
I, 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 I'm not gonna comment as I had the president's report, and people are ready to go. Mr. President, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. I'm assuming, uh, there's no discussion on this, so I'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those in. Tensions, motion carries nine zero zero. We are adjourned at eight fifty-eight.